All right, I will call to order the June 5th, 2025, meeting of the Planning Commission. We can start with roll call.
Chair Dennison.
Here.
Vice Chair Simcock.
Here.
Commissioner Brennan.
Here.
Commissioner Yu.
Here.
Did receive a email from Commissioner Moran, she is excused.
Thank you. I will solicit a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is approval of the minutes of the May 15th, 2025 Planning Commission. Did anybody have any edits, updates, changes, or concerns with said minutes? Hearing none, I will look for a motion to approve the Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, May 15th.
I'll make a, uh, I'll move to approve as is, sorry.
All right, and I will second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Approve, against abstentions.
Yes.
Yeah, abstention.
Two?
We were both absent.
The motion doesn't pass. The motion doesn't pass.
Okay, we'll handle it next time, thank you. Next up is the Council Liaison Report. We will give our council member liaison a chance to speak to us later. Next up, community input. At this time, any person may address the Planning Commission concerning an item that is not on the agenda. The Commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the Commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than three minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. Hearing none, we'll move on to our public hearing. We'll start with a disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts.
I made a site visit yesterday, I didn't go onto the property, I stayed on the sidewalk. Didn't meet anybody.
I made a site visit on May 30th at 123 South Baldwin, same as Commissioner Simcock. I was on the sidewalk side and was able to see through, for the most part, on the side, sides of the property.
Same with my, yeah, I was on the sidewalk, I didn't go into the property.
And I visited it the first time that we saw the house, so I did not go back, although I drive by it.
I think I know what I'm driving.
So I am familiar with the property. All right. Next up. We have a public hearing to adopt, to review Resolution PC 25-05, conditionally approving a variance 24-01, a conditional use permit 24-03, a design review permit 24-05, and a certificate of appropriateness 24-04. Does city staff have a presentation?
Chair Dennison, our senior planner Wolf will deliver a presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you Director. Good evening Commissioners, tonight the Commission will be reviewing the development project proposed for 123 South Baldwin Avenue, which is a request to develop two undeveloped parcels that flink the existing historical landmark on the site, each with two detached single-family residential condominium units, resulting in a total five-unit development. We have a PowerPoint slide. That to go up on screen. For this project, the Commission will be considering two requests. The first involves the demolition of an existing detached garage, the construction of four detached residential condominium units, and the reconfiguration of lot lines within the project site. The scope of the Commission's review includes historic review because the project site includes the Twicross House, a designated historic landmark. The first request requires the approvals of a variance, conditional use permit, design review permit, and a certificate of appropriateness. The second request involves the reconfiguration of lot lines, provided the Commission approves the aforementioned variance, and a subdivision to create four aerospace parcels for condominium unit purposes. This requires the approval of a lot line adjustment and a tentative parcel map, which comes through as a recommendation to the City Council. The project site is located along the west side of Baldwin Avenue corridor, north of Bonita Avenue and south of Esperanza Avenue. The project site is within the R313 multifamily residential zone, and is bounded on all sides by properties within the same zone. The surrounding vicinity is a mix of single and multifamily development. Currently, there are, there is only one single-family residence in the project site, which is historically designated Twicross House, and one detached garage within the northwest quadrant. The site is densely vegetated, but there are openings at the rear and to the north. And to the north, you see a, the two family detached residence, which is located on the corner of Baldwin and Esperanza. And behind, you see a, an apartment building that is on Esperanza. The surrounding neighborhood along South Baldwin Avenue is characterized by the craftsman architecture intermixed with contemporary styles. The project site is comprised of three legal parcels, which I refer to as Lot A, Lot B, and Lot C, from north to south. Lot B includes the Twicross House, while lots A and C are vacant, but narrow parcels. From this aerial, you'll be able to see that the most, most of the surrounding properties are multifamily developments, and to the south is a single-family dwelling currently undergoing the construction of a detached ADU, and in addition to its primary unit. You'll also be able to notice that a property, that the property to the south is narrow, but much deeper than the project site. Here's a site survey which better illustrates the, sorry, the dimensions of the size of the project site and the lots within. While the project site is rectangular in shape and generously wide, vacant lots A and C are very narrow, at 30 feet and 28 feet respectively. The garage at the northwest corner is proposed for demolition to accommodate the development. The Twicross House will be preserved in place. The proposed project site includes two single-family units at the north end, and two single-family units at the south end. The new units at the front are positioned closer to the street than the Twicross House. There is reasonable necessity for this in that each unit will include its own attached garage and faces the interior of the site. The driveway provides the minimum required 26-foot and 8-inch backout clearance from the opening of each garage. The rear units are positioned close to the rear of the property line at just over the 10-foot minimum requirement. The development will also provide a new garage for the Twicross House attached to the residence and replacing its back patio. Staff reviewed the proposed development against the zoning development standards and found that the project site does not meet some of the standards for lot dimension and size, and exceeds the density allowed on a per-lot basis. But the zoning standards you see on screen include, from building coverage all the way to parking, are in compliance. The following slides will demonstrate how and why the standards for lot dimension and size and the density are not being met. So the applicant originally proposed a development that would merge all lots as one parcel and then convert the Twicross House to a residential condominium unit. However, because it was built prior to the adoption of Uniform Building Codes, Sierra Madrid Municipal Code prohibits its conversion. This prohibition was adopted alongside the establishment of Title 16, which is for subdivisions, in 1999. Unfortunately, there is no documentation that provides any explanation or reasoning as to the prohibition you see before you. Staff did sample a few other nearby cities, and did not find any similar prohibition or limitation codified. So had the requirements applied toward a project site rather than a lot, the development would be in compliance with dimensions, area, and density, noting that the lot depth is existing legally non-conforming condition that would not meet, or need a modification. So zoning code section 17.28.050 allows for up to six dwelling units on a lot, on a lot of this size. The math is shown on screen, if you'd like I can go over that more in depth. The density in this hypothetical is 12 units per acre. Where you see five units on the site, that is 12 units per acre, and that is within the allow 13 dwelling units per acre, and therefore consistent with the density permitted by the general plan land use element. I would like to note however, that there, that a development proposed as you see here on screen would nonetheless be subject to the approval of a variance from the minimum requirement for the side yard setback. In that case, in the case you see on screen, the minimum required side yard setback would be 10 feet. And in this case, you're seeing 5 feet. In this situation, staff would nonetheless be able to support the approval of variance because it would, it would be highly impractical for a development to be in compliance with zoning standards and general plan policies, and could potentially result in a garage dominant development. Therefore, the applicant proposes a solution that preserves the Twicross House on its own parcel of land and no longer necessitating its conversion to a condominium. However, to develop the vacant parcels, it is necessary to take land from Lot B and provide it to lots A and C. The proposed configuration widens Lot A from 30 to 43 feet, and Lot C from 28 to 39 feet, while narrowing Lot B from 72 to 48 feet at the street front. Lot B's depth is shortened to provide lots A and C more land area for width at the rear property line of 67 feet and 63 feet respectively. There, there are minimum standards for lot dimensions and size requiring a depth of no less than 40, 140 feet, and a width of no less than 90 feet. The lot configuration will also result in lot areas that are not in compliance with the minimum lot area requiring 12,600 square feet. Sierra Madrid Municipal Code, Municipal Code section 17.28.030, Part B 1, sets the minimum standards for lot dimensions and area. Note that it applies to lots, not project sites. And in this case, a project site can include one or more lots. The dwelling units proposed in the project site will be situated on the adjacent vacant lots in places that are in compliance with the minimum setbacks required based on the proposed lot dimensions. Code section 17.28.050 requires that lots up to 6,750 square feet be limited in density to one dwelling unit per lot. The land use permits a density of 13 dwelling units per acre, and the density proposed for Lot A is roughly 13.07, and for Lot C is roughly 14.02 per acre. The minimum lot area required for two dwelling units on any lot would be a minimum of 6,750 square feet. So for the approval of this project, it would require approval of a variance, and in this case, it's two variances. As I explained, it's for the minimum lot dimension and size, as well as the minimum, maximum number dwelling units per lot. Staff found that the condominium conversion prohibition to cause unnecessary hardship to the compliance of these standards because, as was demonstrated by the hypothetical scenario, the development would otherwise be in compliance. To ensure that granting the variance does not constitute a grant of special privileges, the applicant has agreed to comply with special conditions, the first being building separation. The R313 Zone Code does not currently have a minimum building separation requirement. Due to the existing non-conforming and substandard lot depth, staff felt it justifiable to impose on this development a minimum standard for building separation, akin to that required for the R2 Zone, being a minimum of twice the minimum required side yard setback, or in other words, about 12 to 18 feet. The second special condition is density reduction. The maximum density that may be permitted for the project site is, in a situation where the lots are combined as one, is six dwelling units. Staff felt it justifiable to approve the project on the condition that the maximum allowed density for the project site be reduced by one, and that if the lots were ever combined in the future, that any additional dwelling units that may be allowed be restricted to an affordable level based on the most needed category as determined by the Director. That category is in reference to the Regional Housing Needs Assessment.
Can we ask questions about what you've shared with us so far before we go?
Absolutely.
Further? A little slower, can you explain the part about the condominium prohibition that we adopted from the Uniform Building Code that seems to be a blanket adoption that you didn't find in local cities?
So I sampled the city of Arcadia, Pasadena, Monrovia, South Pasadena, and El Monte. And in their, in their municipal code for subdivisions, I did not find any, anything around the condominium conversion that prohibits the conversion of any structures built prior to the adoption of Uniform Building Codes. So the adoption of Uniform Building Codes was done in 1927 according to UC Berkeley, and the home, the structure Twicross House was built in 1915. And so, again, I don't know why there is a blanket prohibition for this. I looked through documentation we have in the ordinance, and it doesn't seem like there is any explanation.
So it is a city ordinance that we adopted when we do our annual blanket adoption of the Uniform Building Code?
No, so to clarify, this prohibition is as part of the subdivision ordinance, it doesn't have anything to do with the building code.
Okay, so.
This is, this was only adopted in 1999 and has stayed since then.
Okay.
Is it possible that that prohibition may have been, we don't have records, but is it possible that that prohibition may have been in place to protect historical properties, with historical significance?
That could be possible, but I do believe there are other regulations that specifically identify the use and adaptive reuse of historic homes.
I don't want to hog the questions, if other people have other, other questions.
So for the theoretical Lot D, could that, besides the one foot, like, depth, could that be done?
So it could be done, but there would be no disposition as to the use of the Twicross House, so it would be a building without an applicable use.
Can you say that one more time?
I don't understand, what do you mean, without an applicable use?
So because it couldn't be converted to a condominium unit, I'm not sure what it could be used as.
Well, it could be used as a house, right?
That I'm not sure about. If all the other townhomes in this development were conveyed as aerospace parcels.
Oh, no, but, okay, let's, let's get back, we jumped too quick. If, if we just took it and made a lot, with the same, one house, just with no plans to build anything else, could, that could be done, correct, and then it could remain a house? So there's nothing, there's nothing stopping us from making it a single lot?
Right, the, the action of just merging the lots as one is a ministerial action.
Okay, just because it's the only thing that's missing is the one foot. If that was done, and then we were at a, basically a conforming R3, what's it, 13, I think? R3 property, what could be built on that property? Could more units be built?
So, so the, the site, if it were combined as one, would be 18,051 square feet. And it could be combined, even though there's an existing non-conforming lot depth, that condition stays and does not get any worse, so therefore, that merge would be permitted. And at 18,051 square feet, up to six units could exist on the site, and there's already one, so potentially, five more units could be.
But they would have to be something like apartments.
Correct.
Because they could not be condominiums.
Because all the residential units on site would not be able to be converted, that, that one would be the Twicross House.
Okay. How, how big are the five units? Do we, it's a maximum, like, you know that offhand, I know it's kind of a, so for the size of the 18,000 square foot lot, how many units could be built? It's five, but how many square feet, is it like 6,000?
It's about 6,000, so then divided, or subtract the existing residents, and then divide that by five, that would be the size allowed, and that, that size is the floor area, which includes the size of the garage that would be required for each unit.
Okay.
It's pretty small, right?
Right.
Pretty small. ADU size, one might say.
Right, right. Okay.
The, the demolition of the garage, and I, I didn't have a chance to reread the, the report, but was that, I wasn't really focused on that, but was, is that, is the garage deemed to have, is it, is it clear in the historian's report that the garage has no historical significance? Or does it, or does it matter, I guess, in the context of a historical landmark like this?
Through mitigation as, as proposed by the historian, it, it isn't significant. I'll get into more detail on that later in my presentation.
Can we go back to the slide that has the new lot designs?
Would you like this one?
This is perfect, so. So the existing house, if we were to remove the other two lots, Lot A and Lot C, would you be able to have a house that size on 5172 square?
It meets lot coverage requirements, but I do not believe it meets floor area requirements on its own.
Because of the garage, right?
And there's a second floor in that too, and you're talking about DU 5, right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So we're, we would, we would be creating a non-conforming lot by doing this.
I believe that's correct, let me double check. Okay, so Lot B would not be compliant with the floor area requirement as proposed. It would be creating a non-conforming condition.
About how big would the lot have to be for that house and to kind of visit, just ballpark, right? It's proposed at 5,100. Sorry, we're looking at you do math and stuff.
Not that much bigger, I would say probably closer to 5,500 square feet.
Do we know what the proposed size, square footage wise, I don't remember seeing in the, the new units?
I have gross floor area totals for each lot, but not for each unit.
Okay, I guess we could just divide them by two for now, but.
Yeah. On Lot A, it's 3,878 square feet, so that's for all floor area inclusive of garages.
3,800?
3,878.
With garage, okay.
And it's two-story.
It's in here somewhere.
It's two-story.
And Lot C is?
The same size.
Same size, okay. Oh, because.
Different lot size, though.
Well, because there's probably the same units, just mirrored, okay.
Correct.
Got it.
I'm certain we're going to come back to this. Any other questions right now? Or should we proceed? We'll proceed.
1,500 square feet.
So development of the project site will include the protection of 10 cost live oaks on site and one parkway ficus fronting the property. All other trees will be removed, none of which are protected. This does include the removal of a prominent Himalayan cedar that is in full view from the street. There is no evidence to suggest that this tree has ever been designated a legacy tree. And I'd also like to point out that Tree 29, which is the tree on the south end and in the center, that had originally been identified in the Arborist Report to be removed, that was a typo, and that has been clarified by the Arborists as something to be conserved. The confusion was with the elm tree that is right next to it, identified as 29B, and that would be removed. The conceptual landscape plan includes a colorful variety of trees and shrubs that will be incorporated with the existing protected trees. A total of 13 new trees will be planted. Our Buddhist marina has a mahogany colored bark and a vibrant green foliage that flowers in the fall. Two will be planted in front of the Twicross House to decorate and frame its entrance. Eastern red bud and crape mordel will introduce purple hues to the landscape from spring to fall, and will be dispersed throughout the project site. There will also be a wide variety of shrubbery. Texas privet is highlighted as it will be planted around the perimeter of the site. It typically reaches a height of 6 to 12 feet, offering a level of privacy for adjacent neighbors. Development of the site includes a storm drain system that will be captured within the, within an underground infiltration basin proposed under the front yard of the Twicross House. Site grading will also incorporate a surface sheet flow diverted away from adjacent property to avoid the crosslot drainage. New dwelling units will get their own separate sewer connections and an individual water meter. The proposed, the project also comes with a proposed easement, shown in red are two variable width easements for ingress and egress, water, sewer, drainage, and utilities. And yellow is a 12-foot wide drainage easement. So part of the required approvals is a conditional use permit, and staff were able to make all the required findings for approval of a conditional use permit. Key findings include that the proposed project is accessible, being situated along a primary city corridor, that the site is adequate in shape and size, that the project is compatible with surrounding development, being at the transect of single-family and multifamily development, and it is designed in a style that references the surrounding neighborhood character. We'll get more in depth on that in the design review section. And that the project retains and preserves the existing historic landmark within the project site and, without diminishing its value. Conditions of approval are fairly standard in this case, but it's worth highlighting that approval of a covenant and code restrictions in a form approved by the city attorney will be reviewed by the Commission prior to the issuance of any certificates of occupancy. The development will also be subject to certain improvements in the right-of-way, including standard curb, gutter, and sidewalk improvements, but also the planting of new parkway trees as determined by the Public Works Department. I'm also noting that there will be a condition that places contingent approval on a resolution by the City Council as required for the subdivision elements of this project. We'd like to pause and forget any questions. To start the design review, here is a colored site plan as seen before. This plan primarily demonstrates the conceptual landscaping, but it also does a great job of graphically representing the site, the sighting of the buildings within the project site. The project will add one driveway south of the existing one to provide access to the two new units at the south end. The existing driveway will be modified to provide access to the two new units at the north end, and a new garage for the existing unit. The open space within the project site is gratuitous, offering both common and private areas for each unit, well in excess of the 500 square foot combined minimum required for each unit. Both, both proposed front units are setback about 20 feet at the ground level from the front property line and 25 feet for the second story. The front two units are also, will also feature open porches projecting into the front yard and surrounded by a low arroyo stone wall. Throughout the project site, new and existing units are in compliance with the minimum requirements for side and rear yard setback from the proposed lot line locations. I'd also like to point out that the new garage proposed for the Twicross House encroaches within the 10-foot rear yard setback, which is legally permitted up to a minimum of 3 feet under Municipal Code section 17.28.080, Part E 1. Here's a bird's eye view of the project's massing, looking down and facing southwest. From this perspective, it can be seen that although the new building footprints are generally square, the building masses are well articulated through the use of multi-plane roofs broken by dormer windows. The overall gable roof formations reference the craftsman style while being differentiated with a contemporary flavor. Here is each elevation of the front units, specifically shown is the north, or I'm sorry, northeast unit. Though there are clearly craftsman design elements well incorporated throughout, the massing is contemporary by employing a second story partially overhanging toward the center of the property. For this unit, only the north elevation will be facing an adjacent neighbor. Building heights all around are relatively low at 22 feet 4 inches, measured from the point of the building where the building meets the grade to the tallest roof peak. Counting in the grade differences, no proposed building would exceed a height of 25 feet. Development standards do allow a maximum height of 30 feet, and the Twi Cross House is roughly 26 and feet in height and therefore will not be dwarfed by the proposed buildings. The south unit in the front is the exact same, just mirrored. I do want to note that the set of three dormers shown here on the south elevation and on the north elevation for the prior seen north unit are substantially raised just to provide some natural lighting into the interiors while maintaining some neighbors' privacy. For the rear unit to the north, the only elevations that will be facing adjacent neighbors are the north elevation and the west elevation. Again, those are fairly modest and minimal to protect the privacy of neighbors. And same thing for the rear unit at the south. Well, in this case, the south and the west elevations will be facing adjacent neighbors. The two front units will be mirrors of each other, and so will the two rear units. As can be seen, architectural forms at the street level closely reference the craftsman style of the Twi Cross House, primarily side gabled roofs with some cross gables and second-story forward-facing gables. However, the massing is notably different in that the two new units in front are much narrower compared to the Twi Cross House. Front units will feature an open porch projecting into the front yard, surrounded by a low wall made of arroyo stone. Rear units exhibit more of an L-shaped footprint and offer well-articulated architectural massing broken by various elements such as roof planes, balcony railing, knee braces, and exposed wood beams. Though mostly obscured by the front units, direct visibility into the entrances of the rear units from the street will be maintained through the corridors provided by the driveways. I just want to note here that the cars in these elevations are used to illustrate roadways or driveway aisles to better illustrate the positioning of the buildings you see on the elevations. So in this slide, we're looking at the north units, and on the top of the slide is from the perspective of the north neighbor looking south. So you're seeing on top the north elevations. And on the bottom, you're seeing as if you were standing in the center of the property, looking north. You're seeing the south elevations. And here is flipped a little bit. So on the top, you would be seeing, you would be on the neighbor's side to the south, looking north at these elevations. And on the bottom of the slide, you're looking from the inside, facing south. Construction will incorporate a number of high-quality materials consistent with the contemporary craftsman style, including staggered edge panel shingles sighting and stacked arroyo stone on the ground floor, planks and battened stone paver hardy plank sighting on the second floor, composition roof shingles and timber bark for exposed wood elements and matching color for window and door frames. Putting that all together, the applicant has prepared a rendering for the outcome of the project. Note that the rendering omits much of the onsite landscaping to highlight the new buildings in context with the existing. Incorporated landscaping is likely to soften many of the hard edges lending to a development that is better blended with its surroundings. The historian recommends, I'm sorry, we're moving into historic review now. And so as you can see on screen, this is the garage, and these are all four elevations of the garage. I've also highlighted one of the pendant lights you see on the roof structure. The historian recommends the reuse and incorporation of all building material from the garage that can be salvaged into the new building design to the extent feasible. According to the property owner, the garage is termite-infested, potentially compromising the integrity of the structural members, therefore leaving the siding materials and ornamental lights as materials that may be incorporated. Recommendations also include the use of wood sash windows and window grids that are within the range of the craftsman style. So that would make a modification to the elevations you see here, along with all the elevations on all the other buildings. Recommendations also include a different stack pattern, rise and run for the arroyo stone when used in the new buildings. On screen is the referenced proposed material at the top and the actual material and pattern in use on the property on the bottom of the slide. The final recommendations of the historian include brick pavers for the driveways, either in a stacked or herringbone pattern. And I want to mention that the resolution before the commission does not have any of the recommendations incorporated, and the commission may consider an approval with modifications to incorporate the recommendations of the historians. To go over the findings for the approvals, we'll start with the variance. Staff reviewed the request for variance and determined the specific aforementioned conditions are unique to the property and justified the need for adjustments requested in the variance. To ensure the granting of the variance does not constitute a grant of special privileges, the applicant has agreed to comply with certain conditions through the development of the project. Those conditions are number 2.1A and 2.1B in Resolution 2505, which again are building separation requirements and reduction of permitted density. All required findings for the variance are provided in Section 2 of Exhibit A, I'm sorry, of Resolution 2505, and conditions of approval are in Exhibit A of that attachment. The applicant has also prepared their own narrative to the request for variance, which is Attachment D of the staff report. For the conditional use permit, staff found that the site is well-located along Baldwin Avenue. It is adequately sized and shaped for the proposed use and offers safe vehicular access from the two driveways. The project maintains compatibility with surrounding residential development, incorporates modern fire and building safety standards, and retains the historic landmark at the center of the site, which will be preserved in accordance with the preservation guidelines. The development contributes meaningfully to the city's housing supply and is consistent with the general plan's goals related to land use, design compatibility, water conservation, and sustainability. Accordingly, the project would benefit the public interest while preserving the community's historic and residential character. For the design review, the proposed contemporary craftsman townhouse development integrates seamlessly with the existing foothill village context by stepping with the site's natural grade, employing human-scale proportions, and using defining craftsman elements, the exposed rafter tails, fiber cement lap siding, and stone veneer. The height, bulk, mass, and sighting are compatible with the surrounding one- and two-story homes and preserves the public views of the mountains. Thought, I'm sorry, thoughtful window placement and landscape buffers protect neighbor privacy and limit noise, while the cohesive palette and consistent detailing unify both public and private facades into a coherent project-wide design. Importantly, the existing designated historic landmark at the site's center will be preserved and adaptively reused in full accordance with the Secretary of the Interior standards, anchoring the new development in Serra Madre's architectural heritage. The project goes beyond basic compliance by retaining mature oaks, maximizing open space, incorporating water-efficient landscaping, and using high-quality durable materials. Its responsive, noncookie cutter architecture, sustainable practices, and preservation of historic and natural resources together constitute a superior design that enhances the neighborhood and meets all required findings under Code Section 17.60.041, Part D. The required findings made are provided in Section 4 of Planning Commission Resolution 2505, which is Attachment A of the staff report. And moving on to the Certificate of Appropriateness, the project includes the preservation and rehabilitation of the Twi Cross House, a designated historic landmark, as part of a larger residential development. Qualified, I'm sorry, qualified architectural historians reviewed the project and confirmed that the proposed work is consistent with the Secretary of the Interior standards for rehabilitation. The historic structure will be retained in place with significant architectural features preserved, and the removal of a nonoriginal detached garage will not impact the integrity or character of the landmark. The new townhouses, units proposed on the sites are designed incompatible, in a, I'm sorry, in a compatible contemporary craftsman style, using similar materials, forms, and scale without visually overpowering the historic structure. The proposed development is appropriately cited and differentiated to preserve the visual prominence of the landmark and is compatible in both use and design. All required findings for a certificate of appropriateness are made provided in Section 5 of Planning Commission Resolution 2505. A report of the proposed project's design in conformance with the Secretary of Interior standards is provided in the report under Attachment H. And moving on to the tentative parcel map findings. Pursuant to Serra Madre Municipal Code Section 16.12.070, any action taken by the planning commission shall be supported by the findings required in Sections 66427.1, 66473.5, 66474, and 66474.6 of the California Government Code and Section 21100 of the California Public Resources Code. Government Code Section 66427.1 relates to the conversion of existing residential property into condominium project and is therefore inapplicable to this project proposing condominium project by new construction. Pursuant to Serra Madre Municipal Code Section 16.40.030, the tentative parcel map shall be denied if certain findings are made by the city council. City staff found that the project is consistent with the general plan, that the site is suitable for development, that there is no reason to believe that the project would cause substantial damage to the environment or public health problems, and that there are no conflicts with any public access easements or improvements. These findings are provided in full in Section 2 of Planning Commission Resolution 2506, which is under Attachment B of the staff report. Lastly, for environmental review, staff were only able to find categorical exemption through Class 31 exemption. Sequel guidelines also provide that if a project qualifies for a single categorical exemption, that the entire project may be considered exempt from environmental review. If the commission is not able to find that the proposed project meets this categorical exemption, it would be subject to environmental review. So again, I would like to mention that the staff recommended and drafted resolution you have in the packet was not drafted with conditions of approval to follow the recommendations of the architectural historians. It is being suggested that the commission consider a modified approval that incorporates the recommendations of the architectural historians as conditions of approval, specified to the discretion of the planning commission.
Sorry, can we stop on that one for a minute? So if we are... If we are, if we were to carve out Lot B to be only the Y Cross House, then Lot A and Lot C would have to go through environmental, correct? Because they're no longer part of the protected lot.
The project covers the entire project site, so I don't believe that a separate environmental review would be required for Lots A or C.
That's correct. Okay.
The alternatives for the planning commission, the planning commission is being asked to take two actions. The first is on Resolution 2505. These are for the entitlements. The planning commission may adopt the resolution as presented, conditionally approving variance 2401, conditional use permit 2403, design review permit 2405, and certificate of appropriateness 2404. Or the commission may approve the resolution with modifications. Or the commission may deny the application, citing findings that the planning commission cannot make and the basis for rejecting those findings. Or the commission can continue the public hearing, providing direction to staff and the applicant. For the second action, this is Resolution 2506, which is for the subdivisions. The planning commission may adopt the resolution as presented, which recommends the city council approve tentative parcel map number 84796, or approve the resolution with modifications, or recommend the city council deny the requests, identifying findings that the planning commission cannot make and the basis for rejecting those findings. Or the planning commission can continue the public hearing, providing direction to staff and the applicant. The recommendation now, and this is modified from what's included in the staff report, is on Action 1, Planning Commission Resolution 2505 for the entitlements, for the planning commission to approve the resolution with modifications. And the second action is for Planning Commission Resolution 2506, for the planning commission to adopt the resolution as presented, making recommendation to the city council to approve the tentative parcel map. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions. We also have the applicant, the owner's representative, the historian. I think we have the architect here as well for questions, and I do believe they want to present or say something as well.
Chair, may I also make a comment about the level of discretion and review here? Normally, for a project with multiple units like this, it's going to be subject to the Housing Accountability Act. And when projects are subject to the Housing Accountability Act, there's limitations on your ability to deny a project or reduce its density. However, in this case, it's not subject to the Housing Accountability Act because it doesn't introduce any affordable units and it doesn't meet the objective development standards. So because it's not subject to the Housing Accountability Act, you can exercise your discretion with respect to design elements of this project.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for staff before we hear from applicant? How many, how many car garages was it?
Each unit will be provided to, an attached two-car garage. So it's a total of 10 parking spaces.
Okay.
It's about 430 square feet for the garage.
I was just making sure it complied with the conversion, that you have to have one and a half parking spots, plus if it's three bedrooms or more, you have to have two, an extra half, so it would have to have those two covered spots. So I was just confirming that that was...
The, yes, the current requirement is for dwelling units between 1,000 and 3,500 square feet of residential area. And that's per unit to be supplied with a two-car covered space.
But this is dictated by the conversion code. And the conversion code is one and a half plus another half if you have three or more bedrooms, right?
I'm not certain about that.
It doesn't matter. It has the two.
Okay.
So, okay, thanks. So I guess we'll hear from the applicant. They would like to make a presentation?
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for your time. Thank you, Josh. Get the guy a glass of water. That was big. I am, my name's Jim Moran. I live at 118 West Grandview. I'm here tonight representing the owner. Unfortunately, the owner had an out-of-town family item he had to take care of, and so he asked me to come up. Mr. Weissman is a community member and professionally and social life was Serra Madre and the surrounding areas. He purchased this property with intent, the three lots he purchased with the intent to, you know, kind of revitalize, I guess was the word, the Tri-Cross House. Lots of research was done on who the Tri-Crosses were and the involvement of the town, and there was never any suggestion to do anything besides just make it what it was. It had some deferred maintenance that Mr. Weissman took care of, and now it is a, if you've seen it, they've done a lot of work. I was in front of you once before for the roof that we had to get a, some sort of historic review on, and that was done, and all the asbestos was removed. And the house now is, nice to say, is being used by a fire, someone who lost their home in the fire. So technically, there's a tenant in there now. The idea was to make a cohesive project. We were going to take what was there and try to like, in a word, like a courtyard of bungalows and not take away from the Tri-Cross House. Take the craftsman, leave it the way it was, and really make this really nice, you know, cohesive, nice property that meets the, we just didn't want to take away. And so the, between the historian and the architect, we think we've come up with a really nice option. We have gone back and forth with Josh and Claire, and it's been great trying to make this so that everyone was happy, and it's, I mean, there's an apartment building behind it with a zero-lot-line garage, a zero-lot-line raised swimming pool from the 60s. The property to the right is a duplex, and the property to the south is a beautiful bungalow that also has an ADU and currently under renovation. So we feel like we've done a nice job. Appreciate your time. I think the architect just wanted to say a few things, but any questions, we'll gladly, and we're, Mr. Weissman is glad to work with on any suggestions. We're wide open to... to, to help make this happen. Thank you for your time.
I'm Garum Anasian, 140 Akari Drive, Los Angeles 90049. I'm the architect, and just want to add a couple of things. I think Josh has clearly explained all our thinking and not much to add, except that to say that the process working with the staff at the City of Sierra Madre was very helpful, very productive, very encouraging, and that's something nice that an architect Also realizing that you have to be sensitive to your neighbors, we made sure that we designed a project that focuses on the site itself, interior, and doesn't impact the neighbors. So as Josh represented, the elevations, the, there are really minimal windows on the north, facing the north property, minimal windows the same way. It's a mirrored image to the south. And, and to the west, actually, our project is impacted by the existing apartment building that has zero-lot line garage, an elevated pool, second floors, balconies looking onto the site, but we probably will have to deal with that with some landscaping to get privacy for, for the users of these back units. So we also are confident that the creation of these four new homes would be something that is well-received by residents of the City of Sierra Madre who are looking to upgrade maybe to a new house and improve their lifestyle, as well as for people who are considering moving into Sierra Madre because they would find four new townhomes of good size, three bedrooms, and some outdoor areas. And so it's a desirable project from the consumer standpoint. That's pretty much it. If I have questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
I have some questions. Just regarding units 1 and 4, you have a patio shown on the street side of it.
Yes.
How does that work? You have no entrance or exits out of there, is that?
It, the, the patio is actually a place where it's a little privacy, provides privacy with the low wall and the, a rear stone. They have sliding doors that open up to that from the interior, and so they could have a little bit of a nice outdoor seating, you know, moving from the interior to the exterior where we have good weather. It's probably going to be shaded because it's facing east, and so it's a nice place to move out.
So it's a slider at the front then, right?
Yes.
On the elevations, it's hard to tell that there's.
Yes, you are correct, because the wall cuts off the base of the, of those openings.
Okay.
Yeah, but the floor plans indicate access, I believe, from at least the living and the dining, the kitchen just as a window, yeah.
It would just seem a little weird because it seems like the side of a house facing the street, right? So that, you know, there's some elements that we could probably take a look at. Just curious, the new units are oriented so that they're kind of aligned with the street itself on Baldwin, right?
Correct.
Where the house is aligning more with the north and south boundaries, right? So there's a little skewing that's going on with the new units. I was just wondering what.
No, actually, originally, when we designed this, we designed the new four houses parallel to the property lines.
Right.
But we realized that we had less separation, and we were not parallel with the historic house. The historic house is perpendicular to Baldwin, which means it's tilted, and now they're all parallel. All five homes have the same east-west axis. That was the change from, from the previous design.
It seems a little bit off, but yeah, that.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think if it's off, it won't be off.
The degrees are a little bit off.
It won't be off.
Okay.
Because we, yeah, we laid it out like that.
Okay. Are there any issues of doing a new garage connecting to the existing historic house? Are you, do you foresee anything?
Actually, we, I thought of that as an advantage because when a garage is attached, it's more convenient. You don't have to get out of the garage and, and then walk across and enter the house, which is the condition now. By attaching it, there's a door in the back of the existing house which leads to the kitchen, and it would be nice to be able to pull into the garage and get out. There's a little covered porch that lets you get into the kitchen door and.
To the existing house?
To the existing house. We're talking about the relocation of the detached garage.
Yeah, because on the plan, it looks like it's circling through a bedroom.
It's attached to the back.
I'm, I'm looking at the plan.
Yeah, well, if we could have the plan, I can demonstrate.
Is that not correct? There's two doors.
This plan does not show the interior of the Tuy Cross House, but as you could.
It's on the.
Yeah.
Am I not looking at it?
I don't know. We don't really have purview over the interior of the house.
Okay, but, I mean.
Yeah, that's a door to a bedroom.
Yeah, okay. Anyway, just take a look at it.
No, no, yeah, but it would be helpful to answer your question if we could see the layout.
It was in the packet that we got. I don't think it was one of the exhibits.
Oh, I see.
I can, I can actually address that because Gar wasn't aware, he, he has no, he hasn't worked on the interior of the Tri-Cross House. His, his job is on the exterior. So that is a door that was, is coming out of the bedroom that will be closed up. So that, the door you're referring to will not be.
Oh, it was an existing door that would be closed?
Yeah, but it's not even, I mean, it was, it was put in later at a later date. It's not part of the original house.
Okay.
It's like a Home Depot thing that someone put in years ago, so.
That makes more sense.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know, it just wasn't taken out because he, he's not involved with the interior plans, so.
Got it, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Carrie Chastain, Senior Architectural Historian with Chronicle Heritage, 55 Huntington Drive, Arcadia. The existing garage that is proposed for demolition has been altered over the course of time, therefore it's not a character-defining feature. Because it's not a character-defining feature, it's not a historical resource as defined under Sequa. Therefore, demolition of the garage would not result in a substantial adverse change, which is to say it would not result in an impact. In our opinion, the proposed design is compatible with existing, and therefore it meets the Secretary of the Interior standards. We support the project, and should you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Maybe my question is more appropriate to you. So the new garage is being attached to the existing house. Are there any things that they should be concerned with, or how should they approach it? And just, are they just trying to match it and make it look? But then we get into the idea of what's existing and what's new, right? And so differentiation that needs to happen?
Yeah. Josh, can I borrow the pointer? So right there is an addition. It's very obvious that it's an addition, it's got a flat roof. I, do we have a good photo?
Oh, so there's an addition that was done to the original house.
Yeah, the door that you were asking about is actually on a rear addition. It's, if you go on the site, it's very obvious with the flat roof and the flashing. So what they're proposing to tie into is not original fabric to the historic building. So what they're proposing actually will not, it, it's reversible, which is one of the standards that are recommended, and so, no, I don't, because the, they're not going to be impacting the historic building itself. It's, it's an addition.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can you just walk us through one more time the, the process of the variances here? Because, or maybe I can just say it to you, there is a code that prohibits the conversion to condominiums, so we have to give a variance around that. And then the lots that would be created are not big enough to support the number of units that are on there, so we'd be giving a variance to that as well.
That's correct. The variance is for the lot dimensions and size as they are proposed in the reconfiguration. And in that reconfiguration, the, the proposed lots A and C are not the size required, the minimum size required for Tier 2 for two units. And so this, this is proposed by the applicant, a variance is required for that approval. This is, this is one solution. I don't know if there are any other solutions. That might be a good question for either the architect or the applicant, or, I'm sorry, the owner's representative.
And if they just made one giant lot of 18,000 and change, we'll call it, they'd be entitled to build the same number of units, but they would have to be apartments and not condominiums.
They, they would all have to be rented because while there could be aerospace parcels carved out for the townhomes, there could not be one for the Tuy Cross House.
Because of the prohibition.
That's correct.
Can I ask just, so one more time on that point? So a, so a combination of the three lots into one would allow for the same number of units to be built, but they would have to be rented, they could not be condominiums? Would you just go over the reasons why that is?
So to, to be fair, if, I would, I would think that there is a possibility that under this condition, dwelling units 1 through 4 could be convert, or could, could be built as condominiums, but I don't know how that disposes dwelling unit 5, because it could not be converted to a condominium. I don't know if that leaves it only to be rented by the authority of the homeowners association that would be created, or what?
Mr. City Attorney, do you have some color you'd like to add here?
I, I think that's right, and I, I just wonder in hearing this discussion whether or not the applicant is considered pursuing an application for amendment to the code, because I think that's also available to, to members of the public as well, right?
It is available. It is substantially more expensive of an application procedure, and it adds a lot of time to the review procedure.
Yeah. But then it's all code compliant, and we're not being asked to make multiple variances.
Your, your request before you would be to make code amendments specific for this project. That would affect then the city as a whole.
And, and, and the only reason I'm saying that is because staff is struggling to determine why this limitation exists. We don't know.
I real, I realize that that may be more expensive, but I also would appreciate clarity around that issue as part of our code. Because that is the crux of the problem here, right? The, the problem is that the applicant wants to develop the property, and we have a historical landmark sitting in the middle of these three lots, and that, that historical landmark can't be considered a condominium as part of a five condominium development because it's in the code, which I, which I'm struggling with.
And that's part of Title 16 of the code, and it's not Title 17, so I don't know, I'm not entirely sure where the authority for code amendment would be on Title 16.
Straight to council.
Okay.
And we're sure that, that, seems to me because they use the year 1927, which is when the International Building Code started.
We should hold that for the deliberation part.
Oh, okay, sorry.
If you don't mind.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Or anybody else? I'm certain we reserve the right to ask you more questions, but.
Absolutely.
I think at this time, we'll let our brains process for a while, and at this time, any person may address the Planning Commission concerning this particular agendized item. The commission welcomes your attendance and participation. When addressing the commission, please begin by providing your name and address for the record. Please keep comments to no more than three minutes to assure an orderly and timely meeting. I suspect we have some comment cards that we can start with?
We do. I'd just like to give a minute to get the timer slide up on the screen.
Absolutely.
Our first, our first commenter will be from Christine Bello.
My name is Christine Bello, and I reside at 109 South Baldwin Avenue in Sierra Madre. I would like to express my concern regarding this proposed project at 123 South Baldwin Avenue. The applicant is requesting a variance to build on parcels that are smaller than those typically required under the Sierra Madre Municipal Code. Granting this variance could set a precedent for future developments that may not align with the city's zoning regulations. This address is on the main road leading to our beautiful downtown, frequented by residents and out-of-town visitors. The construction of four two-story condominiums in such small parcels could disrupt the visual harmony of the street, altering the aesthetic appeal that defines this part of Sierra Madre. While the area is owned for this level of development, the effects of the project will not alter this property alone. The dense residential housing will disrupt the flow of the neighboring homes as well. The historical style, its style is reflected with each property south of 123 South Baldwin Avenue, and the distance from the sidewalk is fairly consistent. Even if the architectural symmetry is accounted for in the new construction, the property will have a noticeable disunity with the surrounding area. My key grievance is with the proposed variance and the conditional use permit for the property, but these requests come with other consequences. It will not simply be the units seen from the curb, but the impact will be for the number of cars on the property and the street, the noise from the increase in residents on the lot, and the potential for long-time residents to move away from our area due to the increase and leading to the way for more development and changes to infrastructure. I appreciate the Planning Commission's commitment to preserving the character integrity of Sierra Madre. I respectfully request that the commission consider the concerns raised and ensure that any approval of the proposed development aligns with the city's zoning laws, historical preparation standards, and the overall well-being of the community. Thank you for the attention to this matter.
Thank you, Ms. Bello.
Cynthia Runa?
My address is 139 South Baldwin Avenue, Sierra Madre. I'll start by saying thank you for the work you do in making sure that Sierra Madre will continue to be the gem that we all love. As the owners of the property right next to the project site, we are here to share some key points on why we strongly oppose this project. It violates several critical provisions of the Sierra Madre Municipal Code. Municipal codes exist to protect the character, safety, and fairness of our communities, and allowing exceptions without true justification undermine the integrity of the entire planning process. Some key violations are non-conformance with zoning standards. The requested variances for lot size, dimensions, and density fall well below the R3 zoning allowance, and the proposed density exceeds Tier 1 limits. Granting such broad variances sets a harmful precedence. Number 2, incompatibility with historic landmark site. Placing four large, modern, two-story units around the Tuy Cross House, a designated historic landmark, fundamentally changes its visual and historical context. The new construction will dominate the site, diminishing the integrity, and certificate of appropriateness should be denied. Number 3, circumvention of code via variance abuse. By reshaping lot lines to isolate the Tuy Cross House, the applicant avoids the city prohibition on converting pre-1927 structures. This workaround for. This workaround forces multiple variances and appears to sidestep rather than respect the city's development standards. For these reasons, we respectfully ask that you deny the application and uphold the development standards that protect the integrity of our neighborhoods. We believe in more affordable housing and developments that comply with municipal ordinances. We will support a proposal that is more aligned with Sierra Madre Municipal Code. If this project moves forward, know that every person driving up to our beautiful Sierra Madre Village will wonder who approved this nonconforming, uncharacteristic structure right at the entrance of the city. I have confidence that you do not want to be that person, and that you will do the right thing for the city of Sierra Madre by not allowing this project to move forward as is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeremy Stacy?
Hi, good evening. I'm Jeremy Stacy. I also reside at 109 South Baldwin, directly north of the property. So I'm here to urge you to deny this proposed development at 123 Baldwin Avenue. This project fails on multiple levels: legally, historically, and in terms of community character. First, despite the Chronicle Heritage claim, this project does not comply with the Secretary of Interior standards for the treatment of historic properties. Standard Nine specifically requires that new construction not destroy historic spatial relationships. Yet here, Tuy Cross House, once surrounded by open space, is being crowded on both sides by two-story buildings, fundamentally changing its setting. This violates both Standard Nine and Standard Two, which emphasizes preserving spatial relationships. In addition, the new garage planned tightly against the rear of the house alters the historic layout. It would have been typical in early 20th-century Sierra Madre, where garages were set back and detached. Second, as mentioned before, the project violates Sierra Madre zoning code, as none of them meet the required width, depth, or area. And instead of fixing that, developers asking for multiple variances because they can't consolidate due to a pre-1927 conversion restriction. This is a design workaround. Granting a variance here would be special privilege, which is in direct violation of California Government Code 65906. Third, the Class 31 CEQA exemption is misapplied. Under CEQA Guidelines 15300.2, you could not use a categorical exemption if the project may cause a substantial adverse change to a historic resource. Surrounding a landmark with modern buildings and shoving two set in front of it absolutely changes its context and prominence. Fourth, this project conflicts with the general plan's goal to preserve Sierra Madre's small town and historic character, its dense incompatible housing that visually overwhelms a local landmark and a historic street. And finally, the entire density justification relies on a hypothetical consolidated lot, one the developer's not pursuing exactly. And this isn't planning, this is legal gamesmanship. It violates the spirit of the municipal code 16.0.08.030 and 16.20.10. In short, this proposal twists zoning law, it misuses preservation standards, and sets a dangerous precedent for what things could come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stacy.
Bob Spears?
Good evening, members of the planning commission and esteemed staff. Sierra Madre has always had an eclectic group of houses, and they are fun to look at. One example is the bungalow courts in Sierra Madre. If you go up Mountain Trail on the east side, there's a bungalow court. If you go up Baldwin at the very top at Miramani, there's a bungalow court. And even lately, there's one at Sierra Madre and Sierra Place. The town has different houses, different sizes, for different reasons. The challenge in front of you right now is that you have a historical house with land around it. We have heard some complaints about density. Remember that the lot behind this house is an apartment house. Remember to the north of this house, at the corner, there was just an ADU put in that crammed that house, right to the south, that development, to the south of the post office. So I'm not sure that this project reflects density. If you look, the project design complements existing historical house, and the additional buildings are sized in proportion to our community. The excellent use of space is a clever masking of the design. And I am very impressed with the fact that they put the garages in such a way as to promote the privacy of the four additional structures. They've done a good job on thinking about this. They also have made the historical house the reason for offsetting the axis of the other four, because they want it to complement the existing one. So there is a very careful thought about what is the design and what is the proportion to all the others, okay? The, there is a long list of variances and approvals, and I commend staff because I'm sure it was a lot of work getting through each and every one of them. But I think you've addressed the concern of it. Remember, these are for one specific project. These are not meant to be citywide changes. And what they are asking for is not that great in proportion. I realize that people like to see a giant house on a big lot, but I'm not sure the future of the city of Sierra Madre and the future of housing in Southern California will support that point of view. I think this is much better than having somebody put a bunch of ADUs in the back of a house up against the, up against someone else's property. I think this is a well-thought-out and well-designed project that you can approve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Lewis?
Hi, counsel, thanks for your time. I'm Steve Lewis. I'm a registered civil engineer and licensed land surveyor, and I live at 169 South Baldwin Avenue, so I'm just a couple of houses down. I'm kind of concerned about the way that this will change the nature of the block. We come into Sierra Madre, and on the west side, all the houses are forty to fifty feet back from the street. They've got porches, they have green space, they have trees. Tuy Cross is currently like that. And it appears that when Tuy Cross subdivided the land, they specifically bought back thirty feet from each of the adjacent lots to make this more of a wider estate piece of property, and that's sort of its historic nature. The way it's framed by its neighboring buildings is how people see it, it's how we see the city as we come in. The east side does not have as many historic houses, but out of the seven houses along that block, four of them were built in around 1915. Three of them were built later in the 30s and 50s, and the one on the corner is a duplex. It's transitioning to that multifamily. Although this is zoned R3, they're all single-family homes predominantly. That's the way they've always been seen, and they fit with the bungalow nature and character of the town. We have a bungalow ordinance, but it doesn't apply to these lots because they're in an odd zone for what they are. It is what it is, and that's fine. But to give them so many concessions on variances, to allow them to have a theoretical evaluation, say, "We're going to cherry pick certain items from this," say, "We could get six units, so we're only getting five, look at how great we are, but then we're getting three, but then you'll give us a variance so we can get five, but look, we're one underneath the six, which we could have gotten." That seems a little bit like we're just sort of, you know, making hand puppets to make ourselves feel about something. It's a really nice project. It looks great. When you look at the house and the diagramatics, it's well-outed, it's well-fought. But the house itself steps in. All of the new houses, they lean forward and in. They're completely at odds with the character of all of the surrounding houses, its own architecture. Again, the architecture is nice, the layout is nice, but to say, "Oh, we're going to give really big setbacks, like thirteen feet, when you need twenty-six feet between buildings just to drive the car, but then you're going to cantilever the buildings over the drive aisle to take sure you can get the advantage, because you want to use all of that FAR, which actually you're exceeding anyway, and I'm not sure there's a variance." And then saying, "Well, we've got a lot that's only forty feet wide, and it's subject to Tier One, so it only has five-foot setbacks on the side, but we're going to consider ourselves as a Tier Four, where we could get six units, except not talk about the fact that that actually has a 10% requirement for setback on a 130-foot wide lot, so the unit should be thirteen feet off the side yards." These are the way these projects are supposed to be under R3. They're supposed to take consideration of the neighboring units, and they're supposed to have this space. They're supposed to be medium density. The historical house just doesn't lend itself to having that sort of nature when you put shoeboxes around it. And again, they're really nicely done, the architecture is good. Still a two-story house, it's twenty feet off the front line. My house at Sierra, at 169, it's fifty feet back. It's got a seven-foot porch with some rock columns and forty feet of clear space until the street. And when people walk up here for Halloween, and Fourth of July, and all of these events that we love, they look at my house, they stop and look at my house. And they're going to stop at this project, and they're going to wonder, "Why is it so different?" They're going to be looking at the sides of houses. All of our houses, single-family homes, front doors facing the street, and this beautiful historic house is going to be flanked by two sides of condos. It just
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
makes sense. So, thank you.
Ani Williams?
Hey, good evening, Mayor Commission. Again, thank you for the job you do. I just want to point out again, staff had noted that there is room in the rear and to the north side of this property to do some type of project here. However, what you see before you and what you hear from the neighbors directly on Baldwin is kind of an abuse of the code by one particular property. We've lived here for eleven years, and again, this has nothing to do with the new property owner. This really has to do with the community that we've raised our kids with, the house that we love right next door to us. I think the house that you said, Mr. Dennis, and you drive by every single day, we do that too. In fact, we walk to school every single day by that house. To have it bookcased by two, again, as Steve had said, shoebox, other projects that are two-story, is just not in conformity with the rest of the houses on Baldwin. It's absurd, it's going to look very odd, it's definitely not going to be conformative. And again, the property owner has the right to build, I think they can build, you know, within the justifications of the codes, but I think right now, I think we're being asked to be taken advantage of as community members, and as community members that are here. We need to consider, again, the folks that have lived here and that are going to stay here, rather than just investors that are basically building to sell these two additional people. I believe in affordable housing, this is not affordable housing. So again, I don't think we're even going to meet the housing element for this with our affordable housing space. I just want to say again, too, that the, I think it was mentioned, but the porches are only eleven feet set back from the sidewalk, as most of the other properties are set back about forty to fifty feet. Eleven feet is quite close. That is from where you're sitting to probably the middle of the circle right here. For people to hang out, and I know it's just, again, seems very absurd, a lot of open space between this, so. The additional thing I think you're doing is, as proposed, you're creating a nonconforming Lot B, which was described. So again, you're making trade-offs to create another nonconforming lot, which doesn't make sense. So anyways, thank you for your time, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Chair, there are no more speaker cards, and staff received six emails for comments, and those were all forwarded to the commission for their consideration.
Chair, may I correct something I said earlier?
Absolutely.
So, I had said that there's a procedure in place to make amendments to the code. That is true for Title 17, but I think the question Planner Wolf asked me triggered in my head, the realization that there is no such procedure for amendments to Title 16 or any other title in our code. Meaning, a member of the public does not have a method to apply to amend any portion of our code other than zoning, and this limitation regarding the condo conversion is not in the zoning code.
So it would have to be generated internally out, or by the city staff, or?
Right, it would come at the council direction, otherwise.
Is there anybody else that would like to make a public comment at this time? Hearing none? We'll bring it back for deliberation. Who'd like to start?
I can go, I guess, if you
Go ahead.
Are you itching?
No.
The density of the housing that is within this property is not the major issue for me, that I'm looking at this. I think that we all realize that we need more units, whether it be affordable or just any kind of unit to offset some of this stuff. But some of the concerns that I'm running into, that I'm trying to buy into, first is, it's a lot of variances and a lot of just looking into, kind of make this thing fit, right? And so, that concerns me. And looking at the diagram, you know, I love a great puzzle, I love the idea of trying to do this thing and figure something out, but it seems forced, right? And so, I'm not so concerned with units two and three that are in the back, closer to, you know, the apartment complex in the back and all that. One and four concern me because of, just looking at the elevations that we're seeing, some of the massing, you know, the thing that I brought up about the side of the house being the patio and all that, even if they turn that into the front entry, I think that makes a lot more sense for a unit that is on the street. But you look at the elevations, and they just seem really bloated at the top of it, which kind of gives you a hint that they're trying to fit too much into this thing. And so, there's this idea of, you don't have enough land space in the ground level to be able to accommodate the size that you have above, so there's no balance to the house, right? It's sort of a leaning, kind of off kilter kind of thing, where there was a comment made about the existing house, and a lot of the things that we're looking for are houses that are balanced in a way that it's sort of stepping in and up, right? To accommodate setbacks and all of that. So the first, one and four units concern me, in those kinds of issues. The idea of the patio and then the main entrance, but just the massing, just, and I was looking at the square footage, just working the square footages back, and they're not big units, they're like maybe thirteen, fourteen hundred square foot, or units with the garage that's about four hundred and thirty square feet, twenty-something square feet. And so that even bothered me even more, because the square footage actually isn't that big, but they look so big, right? And so there's a disconnect that happens with the proportionality of the house, of the units themselves. So that's where I'm sitting, I'm struggling with the number of variances and sort of accommodations that we need to make to make this work, plus the fact that the first one and four units are, don't seem to be working per the design as presented. So I'll keep it at that and come back with any more comments if we need to.
No, I agree with a lot of that. Yeah, the number of variances to get this to three lots is kind of strange, especially making the middle one nonconforming and making these, we're trying to make, we're bending a lot of things around this one code that we can't convert it to a condominium for some reason. But it, I know a lot of work was probably put into figuring a way to get all these things to work, but it just, when we're at the end, it's just so many variances. I also have a bit of a problem with the units in the front being really, I mean, looking at the picture, they're really coming out. I mean, there was, you know, if this, if this was just a four-unit project on a smaller lot somewhere else, I think I would love it. But doing that to that house, kind of putting it in the middle and taking away all the sides, I mean, we have our, you know, historic preservation, I think, you know, I mean, just a year ago, I approved a roof for that house, and they asked me what color. We had to approve a color for the roof that was being replaced. And now I'm being asked to approve four big buildings around it, and, you know, it's a historical landmark. I think this is detracting from the house. It changes the exterior appearance of the house. I know we're not touching the I know we're not touching the house, but changing the amount of free space around it changes it to me. So I have a problem with that. That's, that's it.
I will, I'll echo some of the same comments, but just to be on the record. The, the biggest hurdle for me is the fact that we've got a, we have a challenging set of lots. We have three challenging lots, but they're challenged because the homeowner and developer wants to create a condo complex of five units in this space that has a historical landmark sitting in the middle of it. So I think the, for me, the facts and the circumstances of this historical landmark sitting in the middle of this property should be accepted that it's there and it should actually be supported that it's there. And I do think that, as Chair Simcock said, or Commissioner Simcock said, that the units do feel like they're dwarfing. I, I don't think, I don't think the design is, is, is doing anything to sustain the importance of the, of the, of the house, of the historical landmark. It does feel like it's getting dwarfed. So I, I'm challenged by just the overall design and I understand, I appreciate staff trying to put, as we suggested, putting the puzzle together of this and trying to make something work. And it is the number of variances, but it just feels that we're trying to create something that would be beneficial to the city to create additional units, but we're putting some, we're putting a puzzle together in an area that doesn't lend itself for this puzzle to be built. And so I'll stop there, but I, I've echoed, I think, some of the same sentiments, but I'm generally not, certainly not in favor of the way it's proposed right now.
So, challenging project. I think having those houses sited close to the front lot line is allowed by right. If somebody were to not have a historic home there and they wanted to put those houses there that close, they would be within their right to do so. So I can't argue with that. If this were an 18,000 square foot lot, they would be within their right to build these houses at this density. It is zoned for that density. It is consistent with the, the, all of our city policies. So I, I don't think that the dentist, the density has anything to do with it. I think that when you look at the year that that code for conversion to condominium was written, was 1999. The Uniform Building Code was accepted 72 years before this code was put into place, which indicates to me that they were creating a stopgap until you hit the 75-year preservation timeline. In other words, when this code was written, because remember, this was 27 years ago that they wrote this code, it was to protect the city from having a historic designated landmark converted to a condominium. I, I'm convinced that that's what the code was there for. When you, when you put it into the timelines with that, I think that that's, that's the hardest part. The rest of it, it's a ton of variances. I think there's other ways to achieve where they need to get to, but I, I just can't get my, I can't make the findings to get a variance around the condominium conversion part of it, which makes the rest of the argument kind of fall apart to me. And so I'm having a real challenge making the findings for the variances that are required here. It doesn't sound like there is much support from the commission.
Right, and I mean, that's, that's, we had, that's step one, that with, we don't have step two without step one, correct?
Right.
So I think that is step one. So we, I don't think we need to even talk about any thing more than that, do we?
Not if we can't make the initial finding. We can't procedurally go, go past there. So I guess, should we ask the applicant if they would like to, I guess, what are their options here, Mr. City Attorney? Refresh my memory.
I mean, they don't, they don't have many options. If, I guess the, the question to the planning commission would be, if this project is redesigned, could you make findings? Is there any scenario where a redesign could lead the planning commission to make the findings for a variance? Because if there isn't, then, then the project dies.
Okay. So for me personally, with the idea of making these subdivided lots, I, I can't make that work. So I, I don't know that they could redesign that in such a way that I would be able to approve this number of variances to, to get there.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, so then, I guess.
Chair, if I may?
Yes.
In, in the scenario I highlighted with the Lot D, that would be a possible outcome, but it would require the property owner to rent each of the units. It would still require the variances requested before the commission's consideration for a setback, otherwise proposed at a minimum of 10 feet to be allowed at 5 feet. That's a possible scenario. Is that something the commission could consider for approval? Is it, would, is the question presented?
So I guess the, and let me say what I'm having a challenge with, and you can, you can tell me if, if your scenario solves that. We're creating a non-conforming Lot B and granting variances for the sizes of Lot A and C. Though, I, I, I'm having a real hard time granting, creating a non-conforming lot and granting variances for the other two non-conforming lots. So does your, what you're talking about propose an alternate way to get there?
Yes. If I could show the slide.
So you're talking about doing away with the whole lot?
Yes. The applicant would have to agree to withdraw the application for the tentative parcel map and instead propose a development for this outcome. Yes, it would still require the applicant to request a variance for a side yard setback on the south side and on the north, on the north side, but those would be the only required variances. The standards would otherwise be in compliance. It would also require that the applicant and the property owner become a landlord or hire a landlord to rent out each of the units. Now, I would welcome, if the chair is open to it, to have the applicant refute that or rebuttal.
So it'd be one lot, five units.
Correct.
Would the entire lot, is the house the historic preservation where we have to find a certificate of appropriateness?
That is correct. This, this outcome, this, this proposal would still require the approval of a certificate of appropriateness.
For, for the additional units?
Correct. So this, this is going to be the same entitlements required, but there's less variances. The variance, instead of the lot size and dimensions, would just be for a side yard setback on the north and on the south.
Okay.
That's at the 10% rate.
Yeah, the, the 10%, I, I believe the, the code requires 10% minimum, but not to exceed 10 feet.
So another five feet up, which they might be able to do, actually. Anyway.
So then the question, well, so it's a different, it would be a different project. So I don't know how much we want to speculate on a, a different project, but.
And, and keep in mind, you, you wouldn't be saying yes or no, you'd say you're open to considering the alternative project. Because you can't prejudge it without the application being before you.
Right. I'm more open to considering that project.
If it's reducing the variances and, but I would still have an issue with two and three on that diagram of the impact that it has on the street side and all of that. Same comments that we've already talked about, so, yeah.
I agree.
Was I giving enough?
Okay, so did you want to ask the applicant something?
Yes. Mr. Benafian, if you'd like to approach the podium.
The owner, Glenn, is not here. He had to be out of town. And when we started the project, we looked at this as one parcel because it's owned together. And the program, the request by the client was to build housing that he would be able to sell. He did not want to be a landlord and have, you know, five houses to rent. It did make sense to us because ownership is a better status for people when they are living in what could have, could be their own pride and, and ownership. Rental, people move in, move out, and it's, it's different. From the landlord's perspective, it's a project that he will develop and then move on to the next project, whereas as an apartment building, somebody has, one owner has to own everything. Also, what is correct, I believe, Josh, is that the zoning here allows for businesses to move in. So it is possible, for example, which is not what the owner has asked me to do, but it is possible that an apartment type of project that is being looked at as an alternative will, will end up being not an apartment, but a commercial development where you would have medical offices, you know, psychiatrists, another dentist, a lawyer, real estate office and so forth, coming in here because the code allows that use in this location, at this location. So there are many scenarios here that don't provide better solutions than pride of ownership homes that could be purchased by people who want to have their property and they will pay less for these than they would be paying for a house that, you know, occupies 12,000, 15,000 square feet of land and, you know, priced, they're priced out. Here, they will not be priced out because there is some economy of scale, building five, building four at the same time. So if you look at this from a logical standpoint, this is what needs to be done here. If I were the owner, I would agree with that. I don't think the rental would be the best option. The business part, I'm not very familiar with, but that could be probably more interesting than renting it because if you have a prosperous, an architect may want to have one of these units and run his practice there and, and pay more rent than a, you know, somebody living there. So there are these considerations and yes, I, I believe there is some crowding that's happening with the historic house, but on the other hand, the city chose to make this multifamily zone, which meant that crowding was part of multifamily, it's not single family. The gentleman who talks about his nice house and different lifestyle, unfortunately, is living in a location where if that house, if it were not historic, could be demolished and an apartment building could be built there. And there would be an apartment building next to some other homes and the setback from the front would be 20 feet and so on. So there, there is no looking forward if you are only gonna look to the past. Things were built in the 30s, 20s and we don't want it to change it. But the zoning is not speaking to that. It is not addressing that we want to keep this the way it was. The zoning says we want to provide more residential available for the, for the residents. And that's why multifamily is, is, is being, you know, expected to happen here, next door, on any of these lots. That's gonna happen. So if architecturally, there are some modifications that we could do to address some concerns, we tried as much as possible by being very good neighbors with, with no privacy issues with the neighbors to the north and the south. So there is no concern about impacting these two neighbors other than having a multifamily development on this site. It, so I, I think the owner is not here to, to discuss the option. Maybe his option would be just to sell it and walk away.
Okay, thank you. So I, I think that I would be open to seeing it come back as the Lot D, but I, I can't make the findings for, as it was presented. And I think there's some consensus?
Yep.
Yes.
We'll, we'll need a motion, Chair.
Okay. I am looking for a motion to deny resolution PC 25-05, conditionally approving a variance, variance 24-01, conditional use permit 24-03, design review permit 2405 and certificate of appropriateness 24-04.
I will make such motion to deny all those resolutions and variances that you just spoke.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I guess that renders number two moot. Okay. Staff, thank you for the incredible amount of hard work that went into this. That was a very detailed, lengthy report and I know that you've been working very hard with the applicant to, to find the best way to present this. And so I appreciate all the time that staff put in. Thank you. And with that, we'll move on to a presentation, our California Legislative Updates, Part Three. Now, this is the exciting part.
Everyone's leaving, what's going on? Maybe they missed one and two, so then.
That's it, they're gonna, they're gonna go back and watch one and two. Let's get this done.
All right. So, so as you mentioned, Chair, this is Part Three, the last part of the legislative update. Sorry it took so long to get here, there were so many items before you that were pressing that we couldn't really have this opportunity to hear this last part. And I'm, on this one, I'm gonna focus on permit extensions and enforcement. You probably heard me talk about last time how this wasn't really a big housing legislation year. The legislator focused more on building permit fees and the cost of building and like the, the costs imposed by the city. But here is another space where the legislator has, has really weighed in on permit extensions and enforcement. So first, under existing law, the city sets the expiration dates for most land use permits and project approvals, also known as entitlements. Usually it's like a year. Under this new law, AB 2117, it clarifies that entitlement does not expire while litigation is pending. This law does not apply to post-entitlement permits, so it's not like, doesn't apply to building permits. This only applies to like CUPs and designer view permits and that, and those sort of permits. And the law is not limited to housing development approvals, so it applies to CUPs for businesses and institutional uses. It was often the case that during litigation, their zoning approval would expire, so they'd have to come back to the planning commission or apply for an amendment to their zoning approval to, to get to extend it out for an additional year and an additional year while litigation is pending. So that resolves this issue. Also on extensions of housing entitlements, cities set the, like I said, set the expiration dates for most entitlements. During COVID-19, the legislator adopted AB 1561, extending by 18 months all housing entitlements issued before March 4, 2021. So just by right, all housing entitlements that were issued in this, during this timeframe, all extended by 18 months. Like AB 1561, this bill extends by 18 months all. Like AB 1561, this bill extends by 18 months all housing entitlements issued before January 1, 2024 and set to expire before December 31, 2025. A housing entitlement does not include a development agreement, tentative map, preliminary housing application, but it includes pretty much everything else. CUPs, design review permits, all that. Really more note for staff, but just to make you aware of how this, how the legislator's thinking about these things. Enforcement by the Attorney General. The state attorney general may prosecute violations of state housing law. Currently, the failure to comply with the housing element law within one year may result in a penalty of $10,000 to $100,000 per month. The city of Huntington Beach got hit with these. Failure to comply with Housing Accountability Act within 60 days may result in a penalty of $10,000 or $50,000 per housing unit. Under this new law, city's failure to ministerially approve a project or comply with the housing element law may result in a penalty of $10,000 to $50,000 per month. So the key here is ministerial approval. So this could apply now to like ADUs, for example. If the city doesn't approve an ADU in time and the attorney general decides to act, they can impose a $10,000 up to $15,000 per month fine per unit. There, sorry, per month. There is no cure period, unlike other laws, and if a city doesn't pay, the state comptroller may be ordered to redirect any state or federal funds intended for the city. That last piece is probably the most important. Because imagine, the city gets a lot of state grant funding and now the state can tap into that grant, grant funding and redirect it. So its, its enforcement power's been expanded.
Has anyone been hit with that yet?
Uh, this last part?
The 1034.
Oh, I haven't, I don't know. No, I, I'm not aware of any. It's, it's brand new, it was January 1st. Bonds for plaintiffs challenging housing projects. Under existing law, a defendant in a lawsuit regarding affordable housing can move to require plaintiffs to post a bond of up to $500,000 to compensate them for the financial injury because of the lawsuit. Defendant has the burden to show that the bond will not impose undue financial hardship on the plaintiff. So if during the course of, this is intended to disincentivize people from suing on affordable housing development projects. If they're going to sue, the legislator wants to make sure that their claim is meritorious. So they put up a bond, and they don't pay the bond if they win. But if they lose and the court finds that the claim was spurious, then they're going to be forced to give up this bond to compensate the project applicant for the cost of litigation. Now, under this new law, the burden to show undue financial hardship shifts to the plaintiff. Meaning, the, before it was, it was an odd situation where the plaintiff sues, defendant says, hey, you have to post the bond, but the burden was on the plaintiff to show whether or not the, sorry, the burden was on the defendant to show whether or not the plaintiff can actually afford to pay the bond. Now, the plaintiff, the burden is on the plaintiffs. And they have to plead, oh, I can't pay this bond because I have some financial hardship. So, so it shifts the burden where it should be. And defendant must also prove that the plaintiff's lawsuit is without merit in order for that bond, to be, to receive the bond funds. So it's not that they lose. It's that they lose and their claim is without merit. Then you can get the bond funds. Expansion of the definition of a disapproval of a project under the Housing Accountability Act. Under, currently under the Housing Accountability Act, disapproves the housing development project means you vote on a project, like you just did. You fail to meet time limits, thereby denying it. You fail to meet time limits on entitlements and post-entitlements, so a design review permit and a building permit. Or you fail to make the required sequel findings. This definition of disapproval has been expanded to include a failure to cease a course of conduct undertaken for an improper purpose, such as to harass or to cause unnecessary delay or needlessly increase the cost of proposed housing development project that effectively disapproves the housing, the proposed housing development without the final administrative action. For example, I'm always a fan of these games, the gamesmanship that we see in this sphere and like how the legislator tries to keep on top of it. So the SB 330 says you have five hearings. Now, let's say you hold two hearings and the planning commission just decides not to meet for the next five months. Well, the, the third hearing doesn't happen and technically you're not in violation of SB 330. But now you may be in violation of AB 1839 because you're engaging in some gamesmanship with an improper purpose to harass or delay the project. And here's the last slide. There are updates to the general plan that are required now. The general plan consists of seven mandatory elements. The housing element is the only element that has a recurring update schedule of eight years, every eight years. But the legislator noticed that a lot of cities haven't updated certain elements for a very long time. And so it's requiring cer, certain elements that mostly pertain to, to fire and traffic to, to be updated. So circulation element needs to be updated by January 1, 2028, conservation element by January 1, 2028, and the open space element by January 1, 2026. I know staff's contracted with, or is working to contract with someone for this purpose?
So for the open space element, our RFP is out. It will close by end of this month. So hopefully we'll have a consultant to work with.
So staff's on top of it and I'm, I'm not sure if the plan is to bring this to the planning commission for review first, or is it going straight to the city council? I'm not sure. We can talk separately about that. And that concludes the presentation. Thank you for your attention with all these three presentations. I'm happy to take any questions if you have some.
Thank you for that presentation. Any planning commission reports? Planning and Community Preservation Department reports?
Chair, then, so for the next meeting on the 19th, we will bring back the noise ordinance update. And also the planning commission will review a CCNR for the multi-unit development on 182 West Highland.
Yeah, it's almost done. I walked by it the last couple of mornings. It's a lot of, a lot of land. I mean, a lot of house on not much land, is what I meant. Thank you. All right. Hearing nothing else, then I will adjourn us to our regularly scheduled meeting on June 19.